Okay, we're set and ready to go. It is four o'clock and we will call to order the February 1st, 2016, meeting of the Salina City Commission. And can we please have a roll call?
Mayor Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here. Okay, great, thanks. At this time, I'd like to invite all who are here and able to please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I thank you all and be seated. Okay, well, get started with the words and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the month of February 2016 as Black History Month in the city of Salina. Gregory Gibson will read the proclamation.
Great, Mr. Gibson, welcome.
Thank you.
Good to have you here.
Whereas Black History Month is an opportunity for all Americans to honor the rich cultural heritage and legacy of people of African descent and pay tribute to them and the community organizations that contribute to the social, cultural, economic, and political life of Salina. And whereas, the citizens of Salina have been in the forefront of efforts to establish a caring compassionate society based on the inherent dignity of all its members by taking a leadership role aimed at eliminating all forms of discrimination and disadvantage and by recognizing that a fundamental strength of our community is based on the diversity among us. Now therefore, I, John Blanchard, Mayor of City of Salina, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2016 Black History Month and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in celebrating the diversity and character of our community and highlight the importance of sharing our culture, customs, and traditions with those around us. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Salina, Kansas be affixed this day, February 1st, 2016.
Excellent. Thank you very much. While you're up there, do you have anything to share with us about other events that may be happening this month or?
Upcoming events are, all area African-American churches in Salina will incorporate Black History facts and lessons in their services throughout the month of February. And Thursday, February 4th, presentations by Mary Johnson on Robert Caldwell, educator and the first black mayor of Salina. Presentations take place at the Smoke Hill Museum from 5:30 to 6:30 PM, free and open to the public. The NAACP of Salina will host a soul food dinner end program on Saturday, February 27th. Time and place to be announced on our Facebook page next week. Tickets for this event will be $10 and will go on sale Friday, February 12th.
Great, thank you. And I'll tell you what, it may be on the Facebook page, but those of you who know me will know that when that date is set, you'll hear from it from this chair. So I'll let everybody know when that dinner is. But thanks, you did a great job. I have a signed proclamation for you and...
Well done.
And while they're all still here and sitting down, I want to thank Mr. Cunningham for bringing the kids from the city over here to be a part of this. So thank you, sir. Appreciate that. That's pretty good for a ninth grader, I'll tell you. Okay, we will move into Citizens Forum and this is an opportunity for anyone to come and speak regarding any item that is not on today's agenda. And we would make, please make sure that you leave your name and address and please limit your comments to five minutes or less. We won't take any action on your concerns, but we will, if need be, forward them to city staff for further review. So we're going to open Citizens Forum if anybody would like to come forward at this Okay, great. We have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we'll move into the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 25th, 2016. Item 6.2, approve Resolution Number 16-7316, amending Section 5(c) of Resolution 126875 regarding terms of appointment for youth liaisons. 6.3, authorize the city manager to approve the purchase of a used vehicle for the fire department in the amount of $20,789.
Okay, are there any items on today's consent agenda that any commissioner would like to have removed or amended? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'm ready to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries 5-0. Okay, we'll move on to administration.
Item 7.1, consider the authorization of donated funds for two acres of the unused land at East Crawford Recreation Area for the construction of a public dog park.
Okay, Ms. Cowie.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for listening to me again about this. I'm Vanessa Cowie, the Animal Services Manager here for the city of Salina. And there was a lot of information that I presented to you at the study session in October. I'm not going to go over all of that. I just kind of want to pick up where we left off in the guidance that you gave was to re-investigate, you know, existing locations and also research some additional locations. And it was an exciting process, so I'll just go through it briefly with you. We looked at some new locations, an additional location at Indian Rock North, at Glenifer Hill, at Centennial Park, at Lakewood Park, and at Sunset Park. And you'll see that we had a lot of criteria that we looked at. One of the interesting things that we discovered is that there is definitely a difference between suitability and desirability. And this is, I think, where we all differ in our opinions. That's based on desirability. That's how you feel about a location and it's also very strongly related to proximity and then what you intend to use the space for as a person. The balance that we've had to find is to try and, you know, please everyone, as we want to do, but try and find the balance between suitability and desirability. The location can't be unsuitable. Desirability is definitely a spectrum. So this is what we've looked at on the criteria and you'll see that the budget would be, it's $80,000 to build the space. We have the space at ECRA. The fact that it was unused has been really important for us. A lot of the spaces that were very desirable were being used for something else. And so we've kind of, we've balanced everything out here to look at it and we took a decision to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and they said, well, let's go tour the locations. You know, looking at it on paper is just not helping us. So we piled into a bus and we drove around and what we found was that having your feet on the ground and looking at these spaces really helped us. And what it's done is it's reaffirmed some of the decisions we already had, but it's also taught us a lot of new things that maybe we weren't looking at. The proximity to a house is so much more obvious when you're there in person. When you're looking at it as 500 feet or however many feet, it's just not obvious enough. But when you're out there and you're seeing the people whose lives are going to be impacted, that was very valuable to us. What we've found, and the advisory board helped us with this, is that East Crawford location was still the most suitable location for this project. And so we took it to the board again and we put it as an action item and they did vote to approve that. And so that's what we're bringing to you today, is whether you would consider authorizing the use of 80,000 donated funds and two acres of unused land at East Crawford Recreation Area for the construction of a public dog park. And that's all I have today. Any questions?
Questions for staff?
One question, probably my same question as the last time. It's 2,900 feet to the nearest human bathroom from ECRA. Any plans to get one closer?
What we've found is with the existing dog park, there is no public bathroom outside the hours of 9:00 to 5:30 Monday to Friday and 10:00 to 2 on Saturday. Our usage is actually the greatest outside of those times. And so what we've realized is that restroom availability, although it affects desirability, it doesn't make a space unsuitable. But with additional funds being made available through fundraising or grants, we do intend to improve the space, but the initial construction would not include that, no.
Is there water available for pets at the current location?
Yes.
Would there be any?
Yes. The cost of construction does include running utilities, which would be water, and then the water bowls would be heated throughout the winter time to prevent them from freezing.
Have you had any complaints from any of the people around that area?
No, we haven't.
Gypsum or Indian Rock Lane?
Oh, around the Indian Rock area?
Yeah.
We have had a lot of written complaints for the location around Indian Rock. It was mostly that the wildlife would be disturbed and that it does affect, it affects the feel of that park. It's very natural, the same complaints we heard in relation to Lakewood Park, very similar.
I have a couple of questions about the whole suitability-desirability aspect of this thing and then also the matrix that you have here for the different on the page there. You know, I like that and agree that, you know, when, to look at different areas because, you know, there was quite a bit of citizen engagement on the Jerry Ivy Park.
Yes.
And where that had some benefit, I think that all in all, it kind of tended to be less in your desirability, matrix probably less desirable for the homeowner, so.
For the homeowners, yes. For the general public, very desirable. It received a high number of votes, but perhaps not suitable. Very small, only one acre, no possibility for expansion, not good parking. So even if you took out of it public comments and just assessed the physical characteristics of that space, probably less suitable space.
Yeah, I tell you, I think when we're talking about parks and when we're talking about things like in our comprehensive plan that we call for connectivity, and parks are a big part of that connectivity. How do we connect people to parks? What troubles me about East Crawford and it troubled me in the study session and so on, and it's why I think we asked you to look at other sides because clearly I don't think anybody had the appetite for Jerry Ivy. The main concern was that it's not connected to anything. You have one way to get there safely, or as safe as possible, in a car. And the whole idea about a park system and parks and rec within a city is that they're more centrally located, you know, if it's one or two uses that are going to be community-wide like this, it's kind of nicer that more people have access to it as possible or whatever. My concern is, is that our decision is being made on the basis of it's far enough away that it doesn't bother anybody, but at the same time, it's not, it's not easy to get to, which is what we really want. And it kind of conflicts with, you know, the thought that I, I think I agree with you wholeheartedly in that I think dog parks are increasingly popular, but I think when we say it's increasingly, they're increasingly popular, but nobody wants one anywhere near them are kind of, you know what I'm saying? Those concepts kind of conflict with one another. So I did though, when I was reading through your list, I liked that you looked at other options because I like the other options that you looked at. I like Glenifer Hill, but I get that, you know, you had reasons for that. But probably the one that intrigued me most because I think when we did the citizen outreach in the summer, we had the dog park people one week and the very next week we had Centennial Park people on opposite sides of the room. For those of you who were there know what I'm talking about. We're kind of on one end of the room for one and one that, but I kind of like, I kind of like the Centennial Park. Now you said in here that you did outreach. I mean, did you give them a survey?
No, it was data from a pre-existing survey that had been conducted. And also when you're out on that space, that has the highest number of residents within 500 feet.
Which is, which is good.
130 people. Those people have not even been asked if they want that there, but they've been...
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was assuming in here is that you had asked them something about a dog park.
Previously, Parks and Recreation confronted the people that lived around there and they offered them a choice of what they would want. Dog park was not on the list, but there was an option to where they could check other and write dog park. The most favorite project for that location was a soccer field. So the residents of that neighborhood could choose four or five options and they could add one if they wanted to. Nobody chose dog park, nobody added dog park. It was very much in favor of a soccer field.
Well, that is consistent with the feel that I got from the residents at the time that they very much wanted that to be used as a park.
Yeah.
Okay. How long ago was that survey?
That was at least over 18 months ago. That was before, I think, even the third location was mapped for the dog park. So that was prior to this.
What's the fiscal cost of this thing, annual? I mean, because it's the only thing that concerns me is, is two things. I mean, I'm fine with going with this, but I want to know before we put more things in, like the commissioner was concerned about water and so on, I want to know that it's being used enough. So what is our metrics going to be to determine whether or not we should move forward and further invest in this or whether it's not getting used? I mean, how are we going to measure the use?
It is, it's $4,000 a year to maintain the space. That would come out of the existing Parks and Recreation budget and the donated funds will be used to obviously construct it. We do have a lot of, we have a lot of data trackers that we've just invested in through Parks and Recreation that can actually test the usage of spaces. And we can set that up at the existing location or we could set that up at this new location and we can actually track the usage both in people and in dogs and see times of day. The most useful data that we have so far is that the citizens commented on a survey that usage of a space doesn't, won't decrease until it's more than five miles away. And that's actually really consistent with the people I've spoken with, is that everybody drives to the one we have now and everybody drives to the bicentennial space. Nobody's walking to them yet. Doesn't mean that connectivity isn't a perk, that that, you know, trail access would make it more desirable, but not having trails doesn't make it unsuitable, is what we've determined.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's kind of...
Okay. What's the lifespan, life cycle of a chain link fence? I mean, is this something that, and is it, is it the major cost and is there some way to put back some funds from the original donation to maybe help offset some of those costs when they come up or?
It is. It's a poly coated chain link fence, so it will last longer than a regular gal fence. That is, the significant part of the cost is putting that fence up.
Okay.
But it's not to say that if the space doesn't, if it fails, you know, your fence can be pulled down. It's not a permanent structure, but yeah, that's where the significant space is, is with the fence.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the citizen engagement thing. I mean, both from the standpoint of, I appreciate the folks that didn't want it, that they got engaged, but also that you looked at different spots and I'm a little worried about it, but it's something that I can, I think I can even support.
And to answer your question about raising additional funds in the future, once the space is built, what we've seen in other cities is that encourages events to be held at that location, obedience classes, all kinds of people wanting to rent out that space, just like they do the Caver Center. And you can see that you can actually reinvest back into that existing space and improve it over time. We've seen that pattern in other cities, so we'd hope to engage the public in that way in our city as well.
Okay. And thanks, thanks for utilizing an old study or an older study for those purposes.
Vanessa, real quick, did, would the existing donated funds, could they be used in the future to like replace the fence or replace anything that needs to be replaced in the future?
Yes, the donated funds we have right now are unrestricted, so we could use them for that purpose.
I was, I was just kind of, that was kind of what I was wondering. I know you get a lot of donations over there.
We do have more than 80,000 right now.
Good. Significantly more. And so, but that's good and so that you can use those funds to improve and make some improvements if you need to.
And hopefully, you know, trail, you know, that would be something that could be added in the future as well, so.
When I was going through your proposal too, I, the way I saw it and the way I felt most comfortable about your proposal was that this is a good first installment.
Yes.
This is a good first step. I would like to see an additional dog park somewhere.
So would I.
And perhaps in South Salina somewhere that would, so people would have a choice. They won't have to drive five miles to get to a dog park.
And I hate using the phrase "safe, safe option," but if we put some, if we built something that the public weren't engaged in and that there was a negative feel about, I think we would struggle to go further with what you're saying and we would really have a hard time building a second one if the first one was somewhere that really negatively impacted people.
Are these funds specifically designated for dog parks or do you have it in mind that, I kind of looking at dog friendliness as an economic issue for Salina. Everybody's got pet dogs when they travel, they need places to stop. They're interested in pet friendly restaurants, they're interested in pet friendly parks and as far as I know, only Petsmart and Lowe's allows you to bring your dog in. So I think it's worthwhile to start to raise the awareness, make Salina pet friendly and raise the awareness of that, so.
That might be the favorite, my favorite commissioner quote to date is what you just said. The good thing about these funds is that they are unrestricted and so it would be bringing it to the commission and getting your authority to use those funds in ways just like you've mentioned.
There's a very nice app out there for phones called Bring Fido and they catalog just, you can drive down the road and it'll tell you every place that's pet friendly, whether it's a restaurant or a shopping area and it's nice, y'all check it out.
Another dog app, I could use another.
Okay, any further questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Cowie.
Thank you.
We'll open this for public comment at this time. Yeah, Mr. Perney.
Do I get to be first again? Abner Perney, 101 Overhill Road. My concern about the, is about the specific site on East Crawford. There's lots of acreage up at East Crawford that is more or less underutilized. And Commissioner Davis hit one of my, well, what I want to do is propose three alternative locations within the East Crawford Recreation Area, two of which are close to the existing restroom facilities. So goes along with Commissioner Davis's comment. What I dislike about the present proposal is that it impinges on the car activities that have been out there for now over 40 years. And the simplest solution would be simply, would be to simply move those three fenced areas to the south a couple hundred more feet and so that they lined up east to west with the water tower. Because the water tower and the big water tap there are the existing limit of car events right now because you get too close to solid objects that no one wants to see a car banged up into. The other two locations I like, and I was hoping we'd have the projector going today so you could pull up the map of the site or the picture of the site, but down by the big stadium, the Evans Stadium, there is lots, there's well more than two acres between Evans Stadium and Markley Road to the northeast of the stadium. There'd be plenty of land to do it there, there's plenty of parking, most of the time. You could add parking right off Markley Road, but I don't think it'd be necessary. You could still overlap with the parking for the stadium itself. And that puts you right next to a fine brick outhouse, which even has a concession stand in it when it's open. The other area that makes sense to me is at the immediate forest, farthest north end of the whole complex by the number one ball field. Again, you would be close to an existing public restroom. There is plenty of ground to the immediate north of that parking lot or to the west of it, either one. You could put part of the exercise dog area to the west of that parking lot. There are relatively mature trees there, there's shade and the water is already there too. And I think either of those two locations would be better than clear out on the south end.
Okay. Well, we'll go, we'll have staff come up at the end and talk about different site alternatives, but just to answer a couple of those questions is that we did in the study session bring up the car shows and whether or not the dog park would be open during those hours. And we recognize that the car show is the big dog.
Yeah, but the car show, the car show you're referring to is only two days. I'm referring to the sports car club events, which are about 14 days a season. It's still not a lot.
And I, and I think that we'll be able to work around those with staff.
Okay.
So, but we appreciate that.
Norman, Anals, Salina, Kansas. I'm concerned about health issues. They're going to be run off because you're, you're same as having a concentrated feed lot. You're going to have all this manure, so you're going to have groundwater pollution, surface pollution. Are you going to have to have somebody there to check all of these dogs and make sure they got their proper vaccinations, health regulations? Because now you're creating an industry.
Okay. Well, I know that those questions have been asked, but we can, for your info, we can, when we wrap this up, we'll make sure we have all the answers to that for you. Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the public comment? We should have said it was going to go in at Jerry Ivy Park, then we'd get all kinds of participation. Thanks for being here. Okay, seeing no more public comment on this, if we could, before we bring it back up here, get some sort of clarification on the two. One on, on maybe just reiterating the site selection process and that probably might have eliminated a couple of the sites that Mr. Perney was discussing. And then also, I know that there will be an effort to make sure that the feces are cleaned up out there and that effort, but as far as vaccinations and so on, maybe we can get a clarification on that as well.
Those are great questions. We thought you guys would have thought of some of those.
Yeah.
The car event has been brought up before and the pre-existing use of that airstrip. The good thing about dog parks is they actually are required to be closed a couple of days a year for things like sanitizing, fertilizing, and maintenance. The existing dog park is closed a couple of days a year. We put signage up. We haven't had any negative responses because it's in the benefit of the animals. And so what we would do is we would align maintenance projects like that with car events so that we would say, because of the upcoming car show, we're closing this down, we're going to also do some maintenance on the space while it's closed. That way we can get two bangs for our buck on that. That's worked in the past. The reason...
Vanessa, real quick on that one. If this location at East Crawford stays, I would expect that we could speak with the Sports Car Club of America folks as far as their racing in there and also even sleds just to make sure that that western fence line is kind of where it needs to be for everybody to be comfortable because I imagine you have a little room to move that if you need to.
Yeah, absolutely. There's definitely some flexibility in this plan. To go too far north or too far south, we're getting into really unlevel ground and so it was, it was decided that it can't go too much further north or too much further south because the cost of construction, they would be significantly increased as far as leveling the ground. And when you do disturb the ground, then you're running into more problems as far as polluting the groundwater and things like that. So the less you disturb the ground, the less chance you have of contaminating the groundwater and it's also reduces the cost of, cost of construction. So where we're at, give or take, that's kind of where is most suitable, but there's definitely, we can definitely discuss other options, maybe come up with some more funding for some of those mitigative efforts. The other question was about enforceability. I'm actually going to use those, my plan is to use the Parks and Recreation usage trackers to find out the times of day that the park space is used the most and then that would be how we would align our patrol with our animal control officers. So they would be scheduled to patrol during the high usage times of the day. And what we've noticed in other cities is it's typically after work, after school, and on weekends. And so we would just schedule appropriately and have the appropriate signage. We're lucky right now that the existing space is so close to the animal shelter that everybody's on their very best behavior. So there's definitely going to be some people that use that space because it's not so closely located to us. But our animal control officers use education first before they use enforcement, so we would also like to just educate the public on the safety of vaccines and city licensing rather than go out there and use it as a revenue maker for tickets. So it'll be more of an education opportunity for us and we're excited about that.
Okay, great. I hope those answered the questions. Okay. Great. I hope those answered the questions. And I think just on the cleanliness, I think that it goes without saying that there's a significant private investment that's in this. So there is already ownership in that. So I am assuming that people there will go up and pick other people's messes up if, if they don't.
It is true. When you create a space that someone can be proud to be in, and you've created the pride associated with that project, then a lot of people do go out of their way to keep it really clean. And that's what we're trying to create, yeah.
Okay.
We'll, we'll offer the baggies. We always.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So you don't have to go up picking up.
And the barrel or something.
Commissioner Davis's mess, or vice versa, so.
Sometimes you give us the bags, but you don't give us the barrel to put it in.
Okay, we'll bring it back up here for action then. Or if anybody has any good dog jokes, I mean, we can hear about.
Mr. Mayor, move that we authorize donation, well, we're donating two acres of unused land.
I think we're just looking to consider the authorization of donated funds for two acres of unused land at East Crawford Recreation Area for the construction of a public dog park.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries five zero. Thank you all for being here. And for donating the money for the dog park. Okay.
Item seven point two, select a real estate firm to assist city staff in selling the vacant, vacant building parcel located at 2626 Quail Hollow Drive.
Okay. Mr. Hobby, this here?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor Commissioners, we bring back to you some assistance. The city staff would like to have your assistance in selecting a real estate firm to help us dispose of the property at 2626 Quail Hollow Drive. As you remember, the last couple of issues we've brought to you have been unsuccessful, and we think it's probably time for us to move into a real estate firm that will help us sell this property rather than trying to work on city staff and city staff time to do this. So we have provided for you a list of all of the real estate brokerage firms that are listed on the Kansas Real Estate Commission's website for the city of Salina, and asked for you to help us select somebody that we can contract with and allow us to work, have the contract developed and signed by the mayor, or excuse me, signed by the city manager so we can disperse this lot. So I'd be more than glad to stand for questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff on this?
Do you have a list of criteria by which we should?
We did when we started looking at the various firms, and knowing that the criteria was, was published for you to look at and decide, you probably have a better idea of who you would like for us to work with in the future. So we decided we'd just leave it to a list of, of the contract, or the actual brokers who are eligible to sell real estate in our community.
Commissioners, this would be from a perspective of retail sales, this is pretty, real estate sales, this is pretty easy. It's a small profit. It's something that someone may not even be that interested in, just simply because it's just a lot versus a home. So really, anyone who does residential stuff in town is, should be suitably qualified to do this for you. So from that perspective.
Without prolonging this too long, is there any one brokerage that sells more private lots than others? I mean, some kind of list lots for builders.
Good question. And that's what you, many times we'll see, is you'll see lots that are vacant for new subdivisions, and then you'll have the, however the process, whatever the process, the developer may use or builder may use to select, you know, whatever realtor, real estate company, you'll see that. Other than that, I'm not sure.
No, I don't think there's any one firm that sells more than the others. As far as vacant real estate, they, each one of the firms that we have worked with recently have a builder that they work with that actually builds on many of the properties they have listed. So they try to work with the realtor as soon as possible.
Is this not something that can be delegated to someone, say, like the city manager?
Quite honestly.
As long as you're gonna pick his wife.
We, we considered that, but we wanted to make sure that you didn't have any conflicts or concerns later. And we don't know a lot about all of these firms or companies, so you could.
Well, it'd be nice to, it'd be nice to have the list narrowed down by at least the ones that we know are interested. I mean, because I'd hate to sit up here and spend much time on picking somebody and have them say, hey, that. And it's like, yeah, we really don't have the time. So.
Can we pick an alternate, just so we can be done with this?
Yeah, let's do something with it.
Anybody can sell it.
Well, go, well, you go ahead and recommend one, but can't be your wife. Or Jason's.
She would not accept.
Therein lies the issues that we, as staff, have. We work with so many builders and developers and realtors in our department. You know, either we're doing a new subdivision, we're doing a new housing project, or a housing study, or friends and family who are involved within the real estate business. We thought we'd ask for your help and assistance in selecting one.
Okay, I'm going to go with the first one on the list, Advantage, AKA Remax Advantage, 415 East Iron, Salina, Kansas.
How about an alternative All-American Realty?
Is that the second one?
Yeah. As an alternate. I'm good to name, I don't know.
Suits me.
Well, my only question would be at this point then, is as we did that, I'm assuming that they are able to do that. And if not, then we'll just take it from there. So.
Yeah, I would expect either can do that.
It'll get quicker than that, does it, Commissioner?
No.
Or just put all the names in a hat and pick out one.
There you go.
I was going to pick the third one.
Okay. Now everybody's going to want an A, AAA real estate. So anyway, we'll take public comment at this time if there is any. Okay, and seeing none, we'll bring it back for action.
I move we approve selecting Advantage Real Estate and, for first choice, and All-American Realty for second choice, to assist city staff in selling the vacant building parcel located at 2626 Quail Hollow Drive.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Two, select Advantage Real Estate, AKA Remax Advantage, as first, and All-American Realty second. Two, assist the staff in selling a vacant building parcel located at 2626 Quail Hollow Drive. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. I think, will you guys be able to do that this week and have something back to us next?
I would think so. It's pretty simple, so we should.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Item seven point three, first reading Charter Ordinance Number 39. A charter ordinance exempting the city of Salina, Kansas from the provisions of KSA 13-1024A in providing substitute and additional provisions on the same subject relating to the general improvements and the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying for said improvements and repealing Charter Ordinance Number 38.
Who wrote that?
You won't find my name on it, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Gage.
All right, that's a long title. Give you some history. In October of 2014, the governing body demonstrated support for the downtown Fieldhouse project proposal. And at that time, what we, we have is we have limitations by state law that deal with issuing bonds for certain projects. And they are non-uniform, which means that there are variations in the law. And in Kansas, when they're non-uniform, cities can pass what we call charter ordinances to charter out. So at that point, we looked at the budget that was proposed for the project, which was nine million dollars. And the city and the private sector stakeholder group that was raising funds and strong supporter of that project and the need for the project, agreed on a 50/50 public-private partnership with regards to funding. So the governing body presumed out of nine million, of course, 4.5 million would be half. And at the time, set the amount of bonds, a level, an amount of bonds that would be issued for the project at 4.5 million dollars. Since that time, we, staff, there's been a lot of work by a lot of people, publicly and privately. But staff has brought for you, brought in front of you at some time ago, the, really the design and construction team, using the Construction Manager at Risk process. We have the designer, SFS Architecture, the general contractor, McCown Gordon Construction, and our owner's representative, Drew Development. They're all under contract. They're working collaboratively, and they have been since August to put this together. Kind of the primary goals were to create a quality regional athletic tournament destination. That was sort of first and foremost in why it was brought. Ensuring sufficient future athletic practice space for the community is also important. Keeping as closely as possible to the original project concept, and talking about the scale, number of courts, and so forth, size. Providing the downtown with a functional aesthetic visual, or visitor amenity. It's, it's an important project. And as you know, in time, that became the cornerstone for what we refer to as a possible downtown star bond redevelopment project. And so obviously, the aesthetic appearance is important. Keeping long-term maintenance and operational costs down as much as possible, ensuring the design is completed by mid-April so that construction can commence as soon as practically possible thereafter. One of the things, as, as time has gone on, and as the design continues to progress, it is not, the design is not completed, and wouldn't be expected to be completed until April. But as, as it goes on with the team in place, we're able to look at construction costs as we go along. And at this point, we, we do not believe that the construction budget, or the, I shouldn't say construction budget, the overall budget of nine million dollars, that includes everything, is sufficient for the project. It's difficult to say what it is because there are multiple alternates. There are a lot of factors at play with regards to final design pieces. And we've seen a big impact of really just demand for construction services, not just in Salina, but in the region. Our contractors work in other places as well. We've seen labor costs go up particularly. So it's difficult to say what that number would actually be. We don't know. And so I put a number in to, to get you to the highest possible point it could be. I honestly can tell you, I don't think you'll be very close to that. But the reason for this action is that what happens is, is that this, April comes around, April or May, somewhere in that timeframe, and the facility's designed and ready to be constructed. And when you authorize construction of any type of capital improvement, you either have to have bonding authority or money in hand. And at this point in time, bonding authority's for 4.5 million, and the private sector has raised their 4.5 million. That's nine million. But if the project is more than that, and you don't have either cash in hand, or you choose not to encumber the general fund reserves, which I would not recommend, then you need to have bonding authority in place. And so the timeframe for a charter ordinance, after you, if you would approve it in some form, and then you have a second reading, and then there's a little different publication requirement than a typical ordinance. So it takes a little while to get it started, and then there's a 60-day protest period. So you can usually count on between 80 and 90 days. So if we took this action and waited until April or May, it would, it would most probably defer the project by that timeframe, that 80 or 90 days, which very well could put the project into the subsequent project year, which starts to have a lot of different effects, not just with that project, but with the downtown project. So, and, and so that's the, that's the reason this was brought to you, is to just simply be sure that you have the bonding authority action now, so that hopefully it's in place by the time you might be ready to construct the project. Staff is currently working on the various alternatives that there would be to fill whatever gap may occur. There are a lot of them. We've, as you know, we've talked about new market tax credits. We've talked about even use of star bonds. We've talked about the 50/50 obligation of the partnership extending beyond nine million, and even up to whatever it might be. So there's a lot of possibilities out there. We will not recommend construction of the project until we know how the funding is, the gap is to be, whatever that gap is, that it's, how it's going to be filled. So you don't have to worry about that. We wouldn't, we wouldn't bring that to you if we didn't know how it's going to be filled. And that's our primary job between now and that time. But the issue with this is the timing, because even if we had, unless you had cash in hand, okay, if you had cash in hand for the total difference at the time you want to commence construction, you're in good shape. But if you don't, even if there's a commitment that may be a few months out there, just, just take, in this case, possibly star bonds or something such as that, TIF bonds. There's a real issue with that. Now, with, with star bonds or TIF bonds, we did confirm that you don't need the separate charter ordinance authority, we don't believe, if you know that those are for sure your default. But we don't know that at this point in time because we're still in the middle of getting a package put together for the star bonds to go to the Department of Commerce. You don't know that. So I don't know that we would, staff would say it's a good idea to rely on that 100%. And it's also not yet been the choice for filling the gap. So it's just one of many options. So we wouldn't want to take you there, and then it probably artificially. So, but what happens is, even if that's the case and money comes in later, if you don't have bonding authority at the time you want to commence it, you're stuck. And so what this does is it gives you the bonding authority, which is essential for temporary notes. Generally speaking, what we do with capital projects is we'll issue temporary notes once we start construction. And the reason is, is you won't issue bonds until after the project is complete, when you know all the final costs. It's closed up, you know, there's no mystery left. And so bonds always follow the project. Temporary notes are early, they're low interest, and they're early to carry it. But even for temporary notes, you need your bonding authority if you should use temporary notes. And so this action is to make sure that you have that. I gave you a broad range because we're working from 4.5 up to 9.5. That would anticipate, even if there's a sharing in there, presuming that with that sharing, the cash isn't available the date you want to start construction. That's what that presumes. So it's really like a legal cash flow timing issue. It doesn't necessarily mean you'll even issue bonds at the end of the project if other sources come in. It may just, they may just backfill the actual cost. But it allows you to have temporary notes and keep the project in line with the timeframe that you want. And that's really what it is. And so when we look at that, I'm not going to go through it in detail. We give you a history of the charter ordinance that we've approved in the past for various reasons. But this action doesn't have any fiscal impact, and you're not obligated to actually utilize the discretion and authority, assuming that you pass that 80, 90-day timeframe and you don't have a protest petition. You're not obligated to do anything with it. But it's, it's just making sure that we don't get to the point that we have the gap filled, you're ready for construction. It will be likely over nine million dollars, and the timing's not right, and we're not able to allow you to move forward because you can't issue temporary notes because you don't have bond authorization. That's really what it's for. So hopefully, that makes sense. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Questions for staff?
I attended a meeting Thursday night about the Fieldhouse question, and there was a straw poll that was taken during the course of that meeting. And the proposed design came in a distant second to a, another design that was presented. And I was just curious, would that question have any bearing on this decision?
I don't, no, I don't believe it would. Because, and the reason is, is because this has nothing really to do with what the final design is and any changes that we're still looking at as we get towards final design. There isn't a concept that'll get you at nine million dollars, not even really very close to it, I don't believe. And when I say close, within a couple hundred thousand, or three or four hundred thousand, I don't believe you're going to find that at all. So you would need to have this regardless of what your final design option might be, unless you want to chop it in half, and I wouldn't recommend that.
Right. Is our timeframe such that it would allow the, that other proposal to be considered?
That's a good question. I don't know. I think at the meeting, we asked the designer to go back and look at that. We don't have an answer, or we'd bring that to you, although this, that's not the topic today. Really, today is just giving you the flexibility you need when that time comes. But I don't think that will be an issue necessarily for you. This, this, it could be, but not to the degree this would be if, in fact, the cash flow timing isn't there.
Could I go back to Commissioner Hardy's question? If we don't really know the final design, we don't know the final cost. I mean, and that's the reason we're sitting here now. It's sort of the old, you know, failure to plan on your, on your end doesn't constitute an emergency on my end. And at some point, we have to have a reasonable final cost. There are always going to be some unexpected costs in construction. That's the reason we usually have a contingency. But to, you know, this project was not done the way cities, or our city would usually do it. And, and, you know, our city department heads are very good at estimating costs like that. I've been amazed at how well the costs usually come in pretty much right on, on the nose. This, it's a very unique project in that, at least initially, half the money was going to be given, which is quite commendable. And as long as we were operating within that budget, I mean, it was really great. If the city will be the eventual holder of, of funds that have to be made up, then we really kind of need to know how much we're going to need at this, at this point. Otherwise, I could see us being back here six months later.
Yeah. The way the process works with the Construction Manager at Risk, well, either way, you really don't know until the end what your cost is going to be. If you do a design bid build, you're going to have design. When the design, you can get the preliminary estimate somewhere in the design. When the design's finished and you have full construction documents, you can, you can get another estimated cost, which is fine. And then what happens is you bid a project, and then you know what the cost is when the bids come in. And if the bids are too high, you're struggling to deal with, trying to deal with a bid that. a bid that may be high, and all the bids being too high. And in that case, usually you have to rebid, because if you give one bidder an opportunity to change their number, you better give another, particularly if they're close. So, there's not a process that gives you an exact cost at this stage of the game. In a construction manager, construction manager at risk process, they're constantly looking at cost. And as you start early, there's huge contingencies, because there's still a lot of decisions being made. Once you look past the shell and you're into the facility you're talking about, in this case, things like turf, basketball floors, finishes, things like that. So, there's a lot of, a lot of decisions that have to be made. And so, this is, what this action is based on is what we know to date, which means there's big, big contingencies and some significant-sized alternates. Couple alternates, for example, many of the folks may recognize that the design review board looked at two facade options. There's about $800,000 or $900,000 difference between the one with more stone and the one with a combination of stone and different types of steel panels. If you thought that, well, you're comfortable not having the stone, and you know that today, you could take that possible high end and just bring it right on down immediately and do that, which, which is fine. The other would be, there's a mezzanine, and the mezzanine, I believe, is about a 600, 700, 850, okay, about $850,000 estimate, very high, a lot of, a lot of fluffing at this stage. But again, if you combine the two, you're easily at about $1,005,000 or more. So, you could take the upward end of the 9.5 for the, for the charter ordinance and bring it down $1,007,500 if you know you're not going to consider those two options, if that helps you to feel more comfortable. The way, at the level that the project is today, I don't think anyone has any concerns about eliminating the mezzanine or the extra stone on the front. Quite honestly, I think it can look fine without the stone, the extra stone on the front. That was much more expensive than anybody would expect. So, you could easily say, well, instead of a high of 14, Jason, could we go, or a high of, I think, 9.5, could we go with a high of eight on the construction piece for the charter ordinance? As long as you took those two things into consideration, that would be perfectly fine.
What I'm going to say now, you know, might seem contrary to what I just said. The $9 million is not the most, you know, charter ordinance 34 was for $12,500,000 for the family aquatic park. So, the apps, you know, the actual number isn't bothering me as much as, I want to get it right the next time we do it. And when you consider, this building is going to be probably second only to the Stiefel Theater as far as identity in downtown. And for that amount of money spread over, what, 20 years, I think the difference in the external facades is minimal. We'd probably spend that difference in, in funding a year for certainly less important things. If we're going to build a building, I certainly do not want an ugly building. You know, to build a burn downtown just doesn't make sense. Now, all of our advertising brochures, our travel brochures, I hope are going to have this building on the front. So, I would really rather spend the extra money and make it, well, it won't be the palace at Auburn Hills or the old LA Forum, but, but, I mean, it's going to be a dynamite-looking building. Because that little bit of difference over a long period of time is inconsequential. But I don't want to be in a situation where we keep coming back saying, well, we don't really exactly know what it's going to cost, well, we found out it's going to be more than what we thought. I'd rather, you know, do it once and be done with.
I appreciate that, and that's why you have a big range in there. I don't expect that you will be at 9.5 million for the, for the, any temporary notes that you might issue. I really, truly don't. But I was looking at that in that way, too, thinking that, well, with many, with a lot of contingencies, with still rough estimating until you get to the guaranteed maximum price at the end, and with some very big alternates that we just talked about, you need all options out there, and you have that flexibility. But like I said, it doesn't mean that you need to use those, and you have the full discretion later with what's the final scoping is, what that number will be because of that, and then, you know, basically what the amount of temporary notes that you might have, and how that, how you might be able to offset that, which, again, we won't recommend that you construct the building until we have the final solution on the, on whatever the gap is, how it will be funded to everyone's satisfaction.
What's the realistic probability of some of the star bond money being used to fund the difference?
Well, it, it, it's a good question, and that's, that's evolving, too. And it's evolving because it's, you've got a lot of pieces to the project. And, but as it evolves, at this point, it's evolving, I think, to a pretty good place. And we won't know for sure really where we're at for a few weeks, but I think, I think in the end, it looks like we'll be able to fund the basic, primary needs that have been communicated. There might be a little bit of question of how much streetscape, but there, there looks to be pretty sufficient dollars for streetscape, and a lot of options to try to make sure that we can do all the streetscape that we want. So, I think pretty good at this point in time. And I know that you guys, it's important to you that the commitments to the public are met with regard to the project scope, and that's, of course, what we're working towards in the, in the Salina 2020 group and everybody involved. And we're all working towards that same goal. And I think there's, we have, we're looking pretty good right now, but I can't say until we get further whether we could still be short there. So, theoretically, if you're short with the downtown project, you might say, well, then can we forward X dollars into the Fieldhouse? And the answer is, you might not want to do that at that point, or you, or you may. It may be a priority for you. Certainly, it's a cornerstone of the downtown, that, that, that big tournament piece that draw the tourism in and that kind of helped stimulate the rest of it. But certainly, those are all choices that you have. So, it's, it's kind of one of those things, you have a couple things. Everything's sort of going to the same, pretty much the same date at about the same time. But we would, I hope, and I think we're, we are on our timeline with that as far as getting ready, getting the package put together, doing all the due diligence work. And I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to think, I don't know that for sure, but I'd like to think that we'll have some either formal or informal kind of response back from the Department of Commerce by the time this question gets to us, so we kind of know where we stand there. I'd like to, and we'll shoot for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Guy.
I am, I was feeling better about this question when we were talking about the public-private partnership component. And I remember, if memory serves me correctly, that when we initially talked about this project, we were, it was a city 33% and private 67% proposal, and, and then the commission decided, well, we're willing to go 50/50. And my, my hope was that we could continue on that 50/50 relationship with, with the private partners, if, if at all possible, to maintain that relationship in that form. The other part of it is that you're talking about the star bond money in the streetscape, and in my mind, it is important to retain all of the star bond money that is needed to complete the streetscape and make it the kind of streetscape that we, we want. Otherwise, it, if we use the star bond money that's designated for streetscape to complete the Fieldhouse, what happens is that the city is just funding the completion of the Fieldhouse in a backdoor fashion, and I'm not really in favor of that.
Well, and at this point, I would say there's no reason to be concerned that that would happen. We really need to get further in the other process. We really know what we're going to have available for that, and you may have enough to fund that and then also to contribute. But at this point, you've been very clear that your expectation is 50/50 all the way through, 50/50 partnership. So, I mean, it's up to you. You always have the ability to change that if you'd like, but that's, that's, I think, been very clear. But yet, then you can also take into consideration other opportunities, if there are still opportunities by the time we get to, to the end of this project, and you can choose how you want to do that. So, our job as a staff is to make sure that, that we give you every possible opportunity and that in the end, those make sense to you, and then you can choose how you'd like to do that. And I will say, too, big projects are always a big pain. They just are. Sometimes things just are more difficult than we think from the beginning, and, and this is a, when you think of the total scope of what we're really talking about, it's not just the Fieldhouse, it's broader than that. So, there are a lot of pieces, and there's been a lot of evolution in moving pieces, and that's just going to happen in that timeframe and with this type of project. So, it's been challenging, but I've always felt like if you have the good people headed for the same goal, you can figure it out, and that's, that's where we've been going.
I had one, one comment, too, to piggyback on, on what Commissioner Davis said, and that is that, in regards, for instance, to the facade or whatever, that, and I also picked this up from the meeting on Thursday evening, is that there was a huge desire by the, everyone in the audience to make sure that we do this right. We have one, one opportunity, and we want to make sure it's the best facility in the region and will serve us well down the road.
Questions, comments? Okay. Well, I think anybody that's been following this knows that I've had mostly cheerleading role in this thing. And happily, I'm happy to support, I've been happy to support this Fieldhouse and downtown project. So, I'm not going to say a whole lot here, but I will have something to say and a few things more to ask on the, on the backside of this, because I do want to hear some comments from, from the public on this. But I've also, I think, as well as being very vocal in my support of this and other placemaking-type projects and redevelopment projects, I was all, I've also had a number of concerns that I have brought up each time we have dealt with one of these issues. And so, I'll kind of make those in my summary comments as we finish. But I'd like to just keep this moving. And so, at this time, unless there are any other questions for staff at this time...
Commissioner, one thing I didn't put in my, failed to put in my blue sheet, but it's important to make note of, is that because it's a charter ordinance, it takes a supermajority, so it would take four votes out of five. I just want to be clear.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment at this time, if there is any. And as you'll notice, I let Mr. Purney go on on the dog park quite over, quite a lot over three minutes, so it's an open timer today. So, feel free to exceed a three-minute limit, should you choose.
Good afternoon. Thanks for considering this. And do I need to say name and address?
Yes, please.
Guy Walker, 500 Graves Boulevard, Salina, Kansas. Anyway, I just wanted to share that I know that this is, it seems like a big ask when I, when I, when we read through the ordinance, and, and I understand the challenges that go along with this size of a project. And just from Salina 2020's perspective, I just, we just wanted to say how, that we're, we're certainly supportive of it. We appreciate the challenge of thinking of going from 4 and 1/2 to 9 and 1/2. But as Jason mentioned, I think there's a lot of options being explored for how to fund that gap, and, and certainly hope that the city doesn't end up at 9 and 1/2. But also, we appreciate that, the timing challenge, I think, of all of this. That's, it really, with the time, with the challenge it takes to get this charter ordinance, we really appreciate that the staff and the commissioners are looking to keep this on the project, keep this project on the same timeline that was originally agreed to. We're probably a little late, anyway. But, you know, that's, that's, that's a big piece of this, I think, is the Fieldhouse. I think the, the community was promised a Fieldhouse with or without star bonds. And so, we just wanted to, I just wanted to say how much we appreciate that we're looking at this, you know, in many different ways, and, and trying to, I guess, overcome all the challenges that go along with doing a project of this scope, this size for the community. So, can't think of anything else really relevant, other than, just wanted to say, we, I mean, we would encourage you to support it, obviously, and, or to vote in favor of passing it. Okay. I would answer any questions, obviously, if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Walker? No, but we do appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Dave Miller, 133 Eastlake Drive. Very quickly, on, on, some of your comments on the cost estimating bother me. You've got an expert construction manager, you've got an expert architect. I remember back when I was in the business, you were, if you did state work or federal work, you were given a scope, you came up with an estimate, and you had to be within plus or minus 10% of that, or you redesigned. I don't understand why we're not getting, I mean, if they know whatever, whether you got two or three different scopes, they should be able to give you a very good number, because they're, they're experts at this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Did you give your name and address?
I did.
Okay. Good. I just knew your name, so it's, thank you. Was there any response that you, is that, is that not the process we're doing here, or is that, or are we, in fact, following that process?
Well, normally, I mean, this, this project was, was really brought to you from the private sector because of the opportunity to leverage private dollars, which, quite honestly, most communities would stand in line and get that opportunity to do that if it's a project they wanted to do. And so, that's how it was brought to us. And the preliminary work that had been done by, I'm not sure who all, but anyway, what came about was an estimate of $9 million. This was not, if it's typically a city-initiated CIP project, we would go out and pay for the feasibility study, which would estimate the project. Now, I will say, even when we've done that, sometimes you don't guess right. We, we experienced that with Fire Station project. But in this case, we accepted the $9 million as a, as a budget, and that's what we really targeted, too. But I do know since then, and different people will probably argue the percentage, but we have seen a pretty significant, a significant increase, or demand, I guess, on the construction side, and that usually pushes the costs up. And so, I know that's a challenge. How much, I don't know, but that's definitely a big challenge that we're facing right now. We, we saw it with utility work. We've seen it with other things as well. So, that's kind of where we're at right now. And like I said, we don't know where we'll end up, and I don't expect it to be at the high end of the range. I suppose it could be, if, depending on alternates and all types of things. But as we get closer, the, the contingency will get smaller and smaller and smaller, because the surety behind the number will get, they'll have a higher confidence in that number. And again, at the end, you'll have what's called a guaranteed maximum price, and that's when that is the number. So, that's when you know. But that's going to be probably in April when you get that.
When is the projected date to have the design finalized?
It'd be really just prior, a few weeks prior to that April date, because they'll, they'll finalize the design, and they'll be estimating, the team will be estimating, really, the general contractor. But that estimate is that what we call the guaranteed maximum price. You have to finalize the design, and then you finalize the cost estimate, and it's brought in as basically the construction package. So, it'll all be in that, kind of that April timeframe, late March, early April, mid-April.
When, when was the, I have in here that, I, I went back and wrote down a lot of dates on here. I have that Resolution 72, 15, 72, 75 for the C, Fieldhouse CM, CM, CMAR, and the new market tax credits were done right at, they're 74 and 75 done at the same time. Do you have a date on that? I know it's after man, before September.
I don't. I don't have that in front of me right now.
Okay. But it was quite a bit prior to that. I'm just kind of curious as to, generally, it didn't seem to take that long on the Bicentennial Center or the Fire Station when we went with the CMAR process and were able to get to a guaranteed maximum price?
Well, I, I should take that back. But I've given you, I don't have the exact date for all of those, but it was basically August, I have in the blue sheet, it was August of last year when we pretty much got the team put together contractually and put together. So, August, September, somewhere in that timeframe, working towards today. I don't have the exact dates, but that's the general timeframe.
Is there a requirement that the final design come through, be presented to this body?
Well, you'll get the final design. There is, because you'll want it to.
I do want to make, I do want to make an assumption.
Yeah. No, no, you don't have to make an assumption. It's, it'll happen that way. And so, like you said, we're exploring the various alternates to the design, and that's what we're looking at right now. And we have, I think we're going to have time to do that well. And we're a little, little behind the time, timing eight ball and that just a bit, but that's, that's on us. We'll take care of that. We're not worried about that. Had some good questions, good input. And that was the thing, it's a partnership. We want the input. We have it. We're taking it seriously. We're going to look at every aspect of it. And then, from that, we'll be able to present that to you and give you good information.
Okay. Comments still?
Judy Larson, 2801 Ray Avenue. I just need to encourage you to communicate with the community about this, because everything I'm getting from the community is very skeptical. And, and the more you can tell them, the more detail you can give them, I think the better off you'll be, because there's just a whole lot of people that are skeptical about this expenditure and, and the whole project. So, and I also need to say, if everybody had a cat, we wouldn't need the dog park.
You're a little late on that comment.
Yeah. Too late, Judy.
Good afternoon. Brian Richardson, 519 South Santa Fe. And I want to first by, start by saying thank you again for the consideration of what you're looking at this afternoon and, and the continued partnership. We, we stood before you now almost three years ago. I've got the, the three bids that we went out and got that seemed to be, you know, discussed today on whether they're legit, whether they're not. And I've got those, but they're dated 3000, or excuse me, 2013. And as Jason kind of alluded to, if you look at cost of, of labor, is going up about 2.75% per year. Construction costs across the country, out of Wall Street Journal about a month ago, are showing 6% to 7% increases. And we're probably low or higher than that, with everything that's happening with the school, or the schools I know just in my own small projects and trying to get people to bid on them. That's getting difficult, and, and the costs are raising. So, if you just take those over a three-year period on a $9 million project, that's over $1 million. as we've all alluded to. And I think on the private side, we would share with you that we don't necessarily feel that the mezzanine may not, or would be necessary, or the extra on the exterior. We too want it to be beautiful and the cornerstone. And so I think as we continue to work through the next couple of weeks, we'll have a better idea on what that looks like. But if we wait for another month, then we're going to miss the next construction timeframe, and we're going to add even hundreds of thousands of dollars more to do this project six weeks or six months or a year down the road. We'll add two or three or 400,000 more with those same percentages. So be glad to answer any questions, but those are kind of the things that are before you today that we've been helping with.
Was there a point on the, you know, we, and I'll refer to it later, but the Gantt, Mike's Gantt chart, his timeline, was there any, was there any feeling at any time in the process that somebody had the thought of, we might need a bit more money on this thing? I mean, we might be a bit underfunded.
Well, I think that's always a possibility anytime you start a construction project, John. So I think that's probably out there all the way across that timeline. But I also think if you look at design today and you look at design three years ago, there's nothing that's the same on those. And so as those things evolve, and we may be here six weeks from now and it's completely changed again, I don't know. But I think as those things continue to happen on anybody that builds a house or starts something with a hammer, there's opportunities for enhancements or changes. And so I think that's always a situation that any banker would tell you, better plan on contingencies and allow, you know, for overages. And I think, again, we had about $350,000 to $400,000 in contingencies on the $9 million project. But as that changes and facade changes and, you know, it doesn't take much on a building of 80,000, 70,000 square feet to add 800,000 to 900,000 on brick and stone. Is it needed, is it not? But those are all opportunities to look at that.
Okay. Any more questions for?
Just one, maybe it's just not getting through my head, but who and when is, well, who's going to decide on the exterior facade and when?
Well, I'm assuming ultimately it's you, and I don't know when. Hopeful sooner than later because we're hopeful it'll come out of the ground here in the next few months.
Yeah, commissioners, obviously, that's your authority there, but it's also, you know, we have the partnership with the private sector. So all the things we're looking at involve their input, and so we want to share and we'll really want to get their input on the final options as we get more information, and we hope to get that information in the next, say, couple of weeks, hopefully not longer than that. And then build to really figure out all the options with regards to the final look. And then so I'm pretty confident we have a place where we can all say, this is kind of what we expect, this is what we want, and it'll work great for us. But I'd say we're about two to three weeks out from, at least two weeks out from knowing what those options might be still. So it's, that piece could, is still evolving just a little bit, but it will come back to you eventually.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Don Boos, 2532 Angus Lane. I've been with Blue Beacon and involved in the hotel development for the downtown redevelopment project. And as I hear this, there's some question about the time it's taken and the cost escalating. But at the same time, I think it's very good that the investigation and analysis has continued. We just haven't taken the initial plan and moved it forward. We brought in experts in sports and in architecture, in sports architecture and operation to make sure that the correct facility is built. The other thing, I think that since the downtown redevelopment process has started, the facility's taking on a little bit more of a tourism role, and we're seeing that tourism can reap massive benefits in the long run. I can also verify from our development at Blue Beacon around the country, we're seeing more of a 10% increase over last year. It's been quite a bit to try and absorb. But the other issue I think that's very important, why take action today? The timing is really important. I know for our hotel, we need to see the fieldhouse under construction. I know at least one of the other major attractions for downtown has to see it under construction before they'll start. If we have to wait 90 days to come back and take additional action and lose this year's construction window, that pushes everything back into 2017. So it is really important to be able to move forward now.
Okay, any questions?
Any question for Mr. Boos?
No.
Thank you also, thank you. No more public comment at this time, so we'll go ahead and bring it back up here for further discussion, and we'll get to a motion.
All right, my parting shot would be simple. It's got to be a pretty-looking building. For this much money, it's got to be gorgeous. I'm done.
Just give everybody a chance to make a comment if they choose to before we take it, open it up for a motion.
Well, I've always been supportive of it. I know I've seen the way the recreation center has had to move events around and everything because of lack of space through the year. So I've been generally supportive of it. I don't, I'd like to see it be a really nice-looking building, but on the other hand, I don't think we need the Taj Mahal, so.
Thank you.
One thing I failed to mention about that meeting on Thursday evening is that I, one thing I did appreciate was, and I'm not sure how many people did this, but there was a real effort to visit other facilities throughout the state to determine what works and what doesn't work about this type of facility. So in the effort to get things right here, I feel confident that that trip or those trips played a part in the final design of what this facility will take and will indeed be something that will work well for the community.
Good?
Good.
Okay.
Mayor's ready for a motion.
Well, the mayor's ready to make a comment. I will just say this, is that I appreciate all the work that's gone into putting this together. And as the blue sheets indicated, the formal process of this began back in October, precisely October 27, 2014, with the passage of Resolution 14-7146. Now, at that time, we were looking at a 70,000-square-foot indoor rec facility, estimated cost $9 million, location the same, with a hybrid model that I think we all discussed quite extensively about just how much participation was going to be open to the general public, being that there is a substantial public investment. And I know that was a concern and a consideration of at least a couple of us up here, and I'm not quite sure where we are even on that to this day. But I'm comfortable that that can or would be worked out as far as the ownership and operating responsibility. Also, at that time, or the operating model, the ownership and operating responsibility, we had discussed contractual agreements with other not-for-profit organizations such as the Y or whoever that might be. I haven't heard anything else since October 27 about whether, what level they wish to be involved and/or if they even still wish to. And also other educational private entities, maybe those would include maybe some of our higher education Wesleyan, K-State Saline, I don't know what those entities would be. As far as the operating costs, I know at that time when we expressed the partnership and the support for the downtown fieldhouse, I know a lot of the discussion also talked about funds put in reserve for the upkeep and maintenance of this thing with the concern that if we don't maintain and upkeep this facility in a very good condition, that people are competing against facilities like this all the time, and nobody wants to come to a rundown-looking facility. So marketing and keeping this thing top-notch are very concerned and haven't really got a lot of, don't have a real comfort level that we have if we're this hungry and starved in the financing of the project that we're really going to be able to adequately put that repair and replacement reserve in place. And then also in the discussions leading up to that, we did have the investor group committing to covering the operation deficits for a three-year period while this gets set up. And it just sounds like without having the financing in place and coming back for more, that that also may have some shortcomings. The 50/50 contribution, as Commissioner stated before, was something that I think we ended up as a compromise because I think we did want to go a little bit, the percentages, we understand were fine, the numbers were a little, at least for me, bigger than I was comfortable with. However, I think we were able to overcome that with some of the other agreements that we decided to make. Project finance, okay, the charter ordinance, okay. I like the fact that we did retain project administration, but it seems like there might have been a few things that came up related to the fieldhouse that I think were challenges for administration, and those would fall in the category of considerable effort put into New Markets Tax Credits and how the funding of something like that and the possibilities that may help with some of this funding. The timeline and the Gantt chart, I mean, I think that we're a little bit off that, and that's been a concern of mine. And probably the biggest thing that's given me heartburn on this thing is that as we passed this, we said that we would pursue a development agreement. And in particular, in the blue sheet that we considered this from and in the ordinance is the use of a formal development agreement or memorandum of understanding, if applicable, to address the public-private roles, responsibility, decision milestones, private fundraising, project administration, and it says, and public project administration. I think that's probably about project funding and who would be responsible for certain steps. I commend the city and the private group because I think the city has stepped up to the plate in a lot of instances. For instance, when the star bonds came new, this was after this thing, you know, we funded the mailings of the star bond request and worked well with that group. And I think there has been a good hand-in-hand working relationship on a lot of these issues. One of the things that, and it came up in December when we were talking about the relocation of the sewer and water lines for the property and the $750,000 that went along with that. I had concerns about the timeline at that time and was told we were pretty much on line, and I don't know if we still are or not. So that's a, that's a concern of mine. But when I did agree to the 50/50 partnership, I, at least on my part, part of the good faith on my part, on behalf of the taxpayers, were that, you know, we'd look at what is going to come from the public on this one. And one of the things, you know, we, I think that we're probably at least 50/50 up until the building gets to about $11.5 million. And how I get at that is I, I think if the city taxpayers are paying for the utility relocation, that's 750,000. I think that the corner lot bought from Mr. Arnold at 55,000 plus, putting a value on the city-owned property at $188,000, comes to $243,000. And then the Save-A-Lot grocery store special sales tax rebate that we're going to have to end up paying for out of the general fund at up to $250,000, all adds up to a pretty good public investment. So while I really do and continue to support the 50/50 partnership on the $4.5 million contribution from the city, I don't have an appetite for $9.5 million plus that additional sum that I just added up there. So kind of where I am on that. So everybody have their comments unless anybody wants to add on. Okay.
Is there an end to this ordinance? Or does it just keep going on and on?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, I don't think you're going to need, you have choices. Some of you, we talked about a couple of things, would like to preserve the opportunity at least to look at them, some of you would not, that's fine. From staff's perspective, it's given you the options you need. And so I really, really, as I mentioned, I think you'll see the surety of the estimate happen. I think you'll see the contingencies come together, and then you'll get to choose alternates later, design alternates. And so I don't think you'll be at the number that's here, I really don't. But again, the point of that being a broad range is to make sure that you don't have to come back for that.
And this ordinance does say a maximum of, and so we're not committed to any particular number at this point.
You don't have to use a dollar if you don't want to. And again, it all comes back to what is the final cost, the final gap, and the options that you agree makes sense to use to fund the gap. And then at that point, you may not, you may not in the end issue any more bonds. It's possible you don't issue any more bonds than what you intend to issue, 4.5 million. It's very possible what I'm talking about, your general obligation bonds for this project because you have a lot of choices. But even in that case, because some of the choices come in, may create a reimbursement that's later to have the bonding authority when you're ready, and you know those options are lined up, but you don't have cash in hand is important, and that's what this is. It's a logistical option for you. It doesn't commit you, it doesn't cause you to do anything you don't want to do.
Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion and we'll move on.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve on first reading ordinance number 16-10819, amending section 2-207 through 2-212 of the Salina Business Improvement District Design Review Board Ordinance.
Second.
That's the next item?
That's the wrong reading, wrong one.
Yep, reading ahead a little bit there.
If somebody seconded that, I'd have been wrong.
I did.
Did you? You hear my bad ear?
Sorry.
You could have got away with it.
Appreciate your commitment to the downtown, though.
Yes. I move we approve a first reading charter ordinance number 39, a charter ordinance exempting the city of Salina, Kansas from the provisions of KSA 13-1024A and providing substitute and additional provisions on the same subject relating to general improvements and the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying for said improvements and repealing charter ordinance number 38.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve on first reading charter ordinance number 39, a charter ordinance exempting the city of Salina, Kansas from the provisions of KSA 13-1024A and providing substitute and additional provisions on the same subject relating to general improvements and issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying for said improvements and repealing charter ordinance number 38. Is there any further discussion at this time? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye. That motion carries and the charter ordinance passes for one. And I'd like to thank the partnership as well. If it passes, it will be a second reading next week, so should nothing change. But thank you again for your work downtown. Okay, move on to administration?
Item 8.1, first reading ordinance number 16-10819, amending section 2-207 through 2-212 of the Salina Business Improvement District Design Review Board Ordinance.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is continuing on the theme of focus on our downtown area. This is coming before you as a recommendation from the Downtown Design Review Board. As you noted in your blue sheet, we prepared this before this had an opportunity to go before the Design Review Board on Thursday. And at their four o'clock meeting on Thursday, the 28th, they did review this ordinance as proposed in detail, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed amendments outlined as drafted and recommended by staff. We provided quite a bit of background on the history of the Design Review Board and a couple of key dates are obviously, 1986 was the day or the year that the board was formed in 2001. The administration of that board transferred from Salina Downtown, Inc. to the Development Services Department staff. And so our staff has supported it like we do the Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, Heritage Commission. It is It is staffed and administered in the same way and treated on an equal footing with those boards. In 2008, there were some amendments to the ordinance that created an administrative review process, and also as part of that action, the City Commission adopted the design guidelines for downtown Salina and also a review matrix, which we use to determine what types of projects are minor administrative review and what are major projects that go before the board. Those have been used by staff since that 2008 date. As you're aware, we are currently under a 60-day moratorium on the painting of unpainted masonry exterior surfaces in the Lee District. And so we outlined the process that we were going to use, and the one thing that we did not execute from a procedural standpoint at this point in time is taking this formally to a meeting of the Lee District Board of Advisors. But just to give you an overview, there are five sections that were amended and one clarified. And the first section, 2207, the primary change there is just to clarify the circumstances under which a certificate of compatibility application must be filed. And historically, the board has reviewed all exterior alterations within the Lee District, which could include also demolition and then proposals to construct new buildings such as the downtown fieldhouse. And so those would be the primary changes there is just clarifying what those are and then clearly spelling out the two exceptions to that, and the exceptions are emergency repairs that might be health and safety-related, and then any type of maintenance work that a building owner is doing that doesn't change the design or the materials or the colors in any way, that would just be considered maintenance and would be exempt from the certificate of compatibility. In section 2208, that section clearly spells out that applications will be evaluated based on the design guidelines for downtown Salina, and those will be the criteria used to make decisions. In section 2209, that spells out the requirements for filling out and submitting a certificate of compatibility application. We did want to point out that since we took over administration of the board in 2001, there has not been a fee charged for certificate of compatibility applications, but the amendment makes provision, so if you so choose as part of the fee schedule every year and you want to create an application fee for that, that would be within your authority. Section 210 doesn't really have any changes there. It just spells out the process and the timelines for an administrative review. If for some reason staff feels like they can't approve something administratively, that can be appealed to the full Design Review Board. Section 211 deals with the hearing process before the board, and the two primary changes there are today, our notification area is adjacent properties, and we're proposing to make that expanded to 200 feet, which would be consistent with Planning Commission and some of our other boards. And so that would be a responsibility to staff to increase the notification area. And then dealing with appeals modeled, I think, on our heritage conservation ordinance. We had language that said any person dissatisfied with a decision could file an appeal, and we have narrowed that to say that the right of appeal is for business or property owners within the Lee District instead of just any person. And to us, that makes sense because those are the people who have a stake in the application process. And so if the board were to deny certificate of compatibility, then applicant within 14 days could appeal that to you. That is no change from the current policy as far as the applicant's rights. And as we pointed out, since 2001, there's been exactly one appeal of a DRB decision that's gone to the City Commission. So it's not something that happens frequently. And then the final question deals with stop-work orders, and there's a proposal to change that stop-work order from the building official to the zoning administrator because it was felt the zoning administrator would have a better feel for goings-on that might not have received a certificate of compatibility. So as we noted last Thursday, this was reviewed by the DRB, and they recommended that it be adopted as drafted and recommended by staff. The January meeting of the Lee District Board of Advisors was canceled, and we attempted to distribute this information through the SDI office, and I'm not sure that we were as successful as we hoped to be to get it in the hands of the Board of Advisors members. So if that is an important aspect for you, we have addressed that in the alternatives that we've given you, and we usually don't bring six alternatives, but because we're not sure about how you feel about the Lee District Board of Advisors' input before taking action, certainly based on the DRB recommendation and any thoughts you had, you could approve the proposed amendments as drafted. You could approve them with any additions or deletions or modifications to the text that you think are appropriate. Option three, we don't think, at least from the Design Review Board's perspective, that they saw any reason to have continued deliberations on them. They were quite comfortable with the changes. You could postpone consideration of the ordinance to allow for formal input and feedback from the Board of Advisors. If you were to do that, we would want you to give us some information on the direction you'd want us to do on continuing the moratorium. Or the other alternative, which Mr. Bankston can explain the mechanics of, is section 2207 is the only item that's really directly related to the moratorium. So if you wanted to refer the other sections or changes to the Lee District Board of Advisors, we would still want to give you the option to approve the changes to 2207, and that would allow the moratorium to expire and have no further need for a moratorium. Of course, your last option is to maintain the status quo and make no changes. But hopefully, we've explained those modifications. As we explained to the board, it's not really going to change the way the board functions or operates or their decision-making. The primary substantive change is dealing with notice and appeal are going to have more of an impact on staff administration than it will be on the Design Review Board. So with that, I'd be open to any questions.
Okay. Thank you for the report. Questions for staff?
Just procedural standpoint, in the hierarchy of organizations, does the Lee District Board of Advisors have authority to change anything that Design Review Board?
They just have the ability to have an opinion or input on how they think the board's working or whether they may have an input on the notice, since they're representing business and property owners in the district, they may have an opinion on the appeals or on the notification area. We included them just because in the past, as a matter of courtesy, staff has primarily worked with the Design Review Board, but we do have the Lee District Board of Advisors, and we didn't want to leave them out of the loop entirely. And so that's really a decision. I would say that in the hierarchy of things, that the Board of Advisors has things that are within their purview, and the Design Review Board is limited strictly to design questions. So the mission of the Board of Advisors is kind of the overall well-being of the Lee District, and so their mandate is broader than the Design Review Board, which is strictly looking at exterior appearance of buildings and properties in the downtown.
So their input was not required for the Design Review Board to take its action?
Yeah, we viewed that hierarchically, it should go to the Design Review Board first, and it would be up to you whether you want that formal input from the Lee District Board of Advisors. Back in 2007, when this was done, we had a meeting with the Design Review Board, and then as a courtesy, staff attended a Board of Advisors' meeting and explained to them the various aspects of the design guidelines and the matrix. And so we were able to report that we had met with both the Design Review Board and the Lee District Board of Advisors. And what we're reporting today is that we have not made a formal presentation on this before the Board of Advisors, and the next opportunity to do that would be the 18th of February. So if that's something that you would like to see before you take final action, one of the options we gave was that you could just approve the changes to section 2207 and defer action on the others if you would like us to make a formal presentation and get formal feedback from the Board of Advisors.
Is there any unreadiness on the Design Review Board moving forward without that input?
No, because they're the ones that would actually administer it. I guess I would defer to Mr. Bankston to explain how that would work, but the ordinance is set up where that each section more or less stands on its own, if that's correct, Greg. And so if they wish to just approve the amendments to section 2207 today and approve that part, allowing the items relating to the moratorium to pass, then if it was your desire to get input on the notice and the appeals process, then you could defer action on sections 208 through 212 and allow us to bring you back whatever feedback we would get from the Board of Advisors.
What is the frequency of your, the certificate of compatibility applications?
I believe last year, we had a total of 12, and there were two of those 12 that were done administratively, and the remaining 10 went before the Design Review Board.
Do those applications require a significant amount of staff time?
It varies depending on the scope of the work. Our last agenda, we were reviewing the plans for the downtown fieldhouse, and that took quite a bit of staff time and review, but something that's a, someone wants to replace an awning or do a new sign on the front of their building, that takes less time.
Would it be staff recommendation that we have a fee associated with that application?
I would think, it's always bothered me from an equity standpoint that we work with people who need a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals or they need a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission, their fees associated with that. I think even if it was a modest fee, having some fee associated with that would help at least defray some of the costs associated with administration. It's not going to fund the operation, but having a fee collected as part of that, I think, adds equity to the boards and the different applications that we deal with because it's certainly no less time-intensive to do a certificate of compatibility than to do a conditional use permit for the Planning Commission.
Would something like, a question like that be addressed when the ordinance is passed?
If you wanted us to explore that and come back with a recommendation, we could work with Mr. Franz about looking at making a change to the fee resolution at that time.
On the, kind of follow-up question to Commissioner Hardy, and that is, is will the changes in here make maybe more things available to do administratively and therefore reduce some of those costs of putting the package together for the review board?
Well, I think that the criteria be the same, but I think the ordinance, the way the improvements to the ordinance will make it clearer to everyone, and it may push more things into the administrative category because it'll be more clear. I think there's been some reluctance and where there's any doubt or gray area, then when in doubt, take it to the board. But this has been an impetus, I think, dating back to 2003 or 2004, where there was a desire of some of the business owners and the Board of Advisors to have a faster track, whatever, for more minor projects so that there was some reluctance on the Design Review Board to delegate that authority to staff. But I think that is passed now, and so it could get to a point where maybe 40 or 50% of the applications could end up being done as an administrative review. And when you do that, you don't have the postage costs and the mailing and those types of things.
Is there any, as part of the process, is this a good time to do this? Are there not very many people in the process that might be affected by this? Are we pretty clean?
We don't have, we have one potential application that's out there, but again, the last, since the moratorium was passed, we've had exactly one Design Review Board meeting, and that was for a hospital project that was already in the mill. And then on Thursday, the Design Review Board reviewed the exterior facade elevations for the fieldhouse project. And so that was the first meeting that was held since October.
Okay. Any further questions in staff? Nope, thank you very much. Public comment? Okay, seeing none? Can I get up for air?
No, I'll take a stab and see where it gets us. With regard to ordinance number 16-10819, I move the City Commission adopt the proposed amendments to section 2-207, which will allow the moratorium to be lifted and postpone action on amendments to sections 2-208 to 2-212 until input is received from the Lee District Board of Advisors.
I would also like, be interested in including a proposed, any proposed fee for certificate of compatibility applications to that motion.
I'll add that. Is that a second?
I'll second that.
Mayor and Commissioner?
A little assistance on that one if you don't mind.
I think Mr. Bankston can speak to the mechanics of it. I have one other item related to the timing.
Okay.
I'll defer to you. The timing issue is, as the blue sheet noted, the moratorium expires February 7th, which will be next Sunday. So in order to truly close that gap, the best, the most seamless approach would be to declare a compelling public interest and take action on the second reading today as well, if you're open to that.
That is a move forward to the next business day, I take it.
Well, it's a combination of that date as well as publication once you've acted on it. So doing it in both readings today would be sure to get all that accomplished.
Let me ask you this. Just because the motion was to approve one and then to postpone another, should we just do the motion and the consideration of a second reading for just the part that passes? And then a motion to postpone the other ones? Because it kind of seems like awful strange stuff to have in an ordinance.
Well, I think, I think Mr. Davis's intent can be carried out consistent with the comment that you just made. The suggestion I would have, again, I think this is consistent with your motion, and that would be to approve the ordinance, but amending it, amended by the removal of sections 2 through...
2-208 through 2-212?
Yes, we're essentially adopting it as it relates to section 1, and amending it such that the change to 2-207 is all that is done through this ordinance. If it, and then again, consistent with what I understood to be your wish, we can certainly then, in a subsequent newly-numbered ordinance that has been vetted by the Advisory Board, come back to you as a separate ordinance and be considered in due course. So you're essentially just, I would suggest, just amending this down to modifying only section 2-207.
Okay.
I would really like to be able to take that as my motion. Do I need to repeat that?
Okay. Hang on just a second. I want to get straight with that anyway.
I think I know how to say it. I think I know how to say it.
Let me read this and see if, see if this, just to simplify it. An ordinance, ordinance number sixteen dash one zero eight one nine, an ordinance amending Salina Code sections two dash two zero seven pertaining to the Salina Business Improvement District Design Review Board and repealing the existing sections two dash, or section two dash two zero seven. Could it be that simple?
That's correct.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read it since the second. Motion to second to approve ordinance on first reading, ordinance number sixteen dash one zero eight one nine, amending Salina Code sections two dash two zero seven pertaining to the Salina Business Improvement District Design Review Board and repealing the existing section two dash two zero seven. Any further discussion on that item?
Would that include a proposed fee or is that?
If, I'm glad you reminded me of that, if I may, that is presently addressed in two dash two zero nine. There are about four lines down, you'll see reference to an application fee determined pursuant to section two dash two.
Okay.
Which that is your code provision that authorizes the resolution, the overall fee resolution. So if it's easy enough for that to come back when the other sections come back, that would be the easiest way to deal with it.
Okay, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries two dash, or, two dash, five zero.
Do we need the compelling interest?
Yeah, we'd need a motion to.
Determine. Read that again.
Declare a compelling public interest for a second reading on the same day.
So Mayor, move to declare compelling public interest to hear the second reading of ordinance number one six dash one zero eight one nine, amending section two dash two zero seven.
Second.
Okay, a motion to second to declare that there exists a compelling public interest to have a second reading of ordinance sixteen dash one zero eight one nine on the same day. Any further discussion on that, all in favor?
Second.
Oh.
No, we're, we need to vote on the compelling interest.
Oh, okay.
So what we're voting on is that there exists a compelling interest. And so we'll reload that, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries five zero, we just established, so we'll go ahead and move on with the second reading.
Mr. Mayor, move.
Okay, I thought you were going to introduce an item for second reading, but, okay.
I move adoption on second reading, ordinance number sixteen dash one zero eight one nine, amending section two dash two zero seven of the Salina Business Improvement District Design Review Board Ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion to second to approve on second reading, ordinance number sixteen dash one zero eight one nine. Is there any further discussion at this time? Okay, we'll have a roll call now.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard?
Aye, that motion carries five zero, thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, I'll just mention quickly that we'll certainly work with the clerk to also modify the publication summary to correspond with your action taken today, so.
Okay, we don't need any action other than consensus to send it back for further, I mean, that's all part of the.
You talking about the fee piece?
Yeah, is there any specifics on that fee thing or is it good the way it is? Okay. Guess that solves it.
And we have the general direction to direct it back through the Advisory Board.
Right.
Very well.
Okay, great, I'm kind of flying blind right now because my agenda is, do we have, do we have an eight point two? Okay.
Commissioners, it'll be for legal and personnel.
Okay, so other business, if there's any other business? Seeing no other business, we'll see how much more fun we can have here.
We estimate the legal piece will take forty-five minutes.
Action afterward?
No, we don't expect any action afterward.
No action following this executive session, okay, forty-five minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for forty-five minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters, subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of these matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters and for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected city personnel for the reason that public discussion of the matters would violate the privacy rights of the non-elected personnel involved and reconvene at six forty, PM.
Commissioners, the legal was estimated at forty-five, I don't know how long you expect to take on the personnel piece, just to make, yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear.
It's going to take longer than that.
Want to go for an hour?
An hour.
Do you want to give five minutes for break time too, so make it an hour and five?
Hour and five, very well, then an hour and five minutes with a five-minute recess will take us to seven PM.
Second.
Thank you, got a little ahead of you. Motion to second to recess into the executive session for an hour and five minutes to include a five-minute recess and to reconvene at seven PM. There will be no business following this executive session. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion carries five zero, we're in executive session.
Thank you.